The regular meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council for August the 5th, 2014 is now in session. I'd ask that you join me in the pleasurable audience.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Over the past month or so, we've lost a number of our residents. Not to turn this into a church service, but we did lose people that were friends, neighbors, people who served our community in many ways. My most, I guess the most recent loss was Abe Shank. Many of us knew him as a friend and as a fellow member of our community. We also lost Jane Tyne, John Tyne's wife, Paul Tyne's mother-in-law, or stepmother, I'm sorry. My mistake. And then earlier, we lost Barbie Kirch. Barbie and John Kirch were longtime residents. John's since left the area, but they were good friends, active in the community, active in the bow club and so forth. Just keep those folks in your thoughts as we take time for a moment of silence.
Tom, we need to add Bob Betts to that as well. He passed away playing tennis.
Sorry, Leo, I didn't know. Bob Betts?
Yes, and he was on the CPOA board.
You all heard that, Bob Betts, I think. We're going to add that list, just to keep in your thoughts. Thank you. Thank you. Counsel, I only have one amendment to the agenda that I'd like to make, and that's to include paragraph C below the consent agenda where we're going to pay respects to Lieutenant Paul Terry. Otherwise, without amendment, could I ask for a motion to approve the agenda?
So approved was the change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is made and carried. I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda's been approved. This is a nuisance. One of the best things about this job, and I mean this sincerely, is there are not a whole lot of things that are great about it, but one of the best things about it is an opportunity like I have tonight. We have with us in the audience Lieutenant Paul Terry, who's served at Town of Southern Shores as a police lieutenant for a number of years. I'll go through his history in a moment, but it just brings me a, it's a really good feeling to be able to stand up and recognize someone who's served our town and served our community as effectively as he has, for as long as he has. Police Lieutenant Paul Terry will be recognized with the town at his official retirement luncheon to be held here in the Pitts Center on August the 15th. Tonight, we want to formally recognize him before the public. Lieutenant Terry, would you join me in the speaker's, you and Becky, join me at the speaker's platform?
I'm going to read this because I don't have very good memorization skills, so. Paul was raised in Ahoski, in Hurkwood County, North Carolina. He began his public service as a dispatcher in 1983 to the town of Murfreesboro, North Carolina. Two and a half years later, he completed the basic law enforcement training at the Coastal Plains Law Enforcement Academy in Wilson, North Carolina. He became a police officer for the town of Murfreesboro. He later worked for the town of Ahoski Police Department, and after three years, moved to the Outer Banks in 1989, becoming a patrol officer for the town of Nag's Head. At Nag's Head, Paul advanced through Master Patrol Officer Detective, earned his Advanced Law Enforcement, Criminal Investigator, and General Instructor certificates. In December 2001, Paul took the step to join our town's police department as a corporal. He attained the rank of Sergeant in 2002, and the rank of Lieutenant in June of 2003, as second-in-command to our police department. Paul became a certified firearms, firearms instructor, and served as our department's first in-service training coordinator. He served as interim chief in 2009 and 2010. Paul, we will be recognizing you in more detail with some presentations at your retirement luncheon here on August 15th. Tonight, Town of Southern Shores formally thanks you, congratulates you on the job well done, and wishes you well in future endeavors. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Time for our staff reports. Town Planner, Wes Haskett.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before getting into my report, I'd like to ask our new permit officer, Dabney Shelton, to please join me up here at the podium. Thank you, Dabney. It's my pleasure to introduce Dabney Shelton, our new permit officer. Dabney is from Hatteras Island and was previously employed with the town of Nag's Head for eight years as a zoning administrator. Prior to working with Nag's Head, she worked for Dare County for 15 years. While there, she worked with the Dare County Parks and Recreation Department, followed by the Dare County Planning Department as a support specialist, and eventually became the Hatteras Island Zoning Officer. Dabney has been a KAMA local permit officer since 1999. She obtained her zoning official certification in 2008, and she most recently obtained her floodplain manager certification. Dabney brings a wealth of knowledge to the town, and we are glad to have her here with us.
Thank you, Wes. Thank you, Dabney.
Very pleased to be here. Thank you. It's an honor.
Well, I have a brief report for you tonight for the month of July. There were six zoning permits issued, 23 building permits issued, which consisted of one new single-family dwelling, two additions, three remodels, and 17 others. There are currently 10 single-family dwellings currently under construction in town. The total amount of fees collected in July was $7,287.96. With respect to code enforcement, there was one warning citation mailed, and that was for one signage violation residential. And lastly, with respect to the comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian plan, the final steering committee meeting, as well as the second public workshop, were both held yesterday here in the Pitts Center. And we hope to present the final draft to you all and seek adoption of the document at the October 7th council meeting. Any questions?
Thank you, Wes. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chief Cole.
Good evening. I have two monthly reports for you. I was away last month, so I'll give you the June 2014 first. For total calls for service for the month of June, the officers had 988 calls for service. You can see off to the left there, a breakdown of some of the highlights of some of those calls for service. Investigators responded to 30 different incidents and investigations, made one criminal arrest. They handed out 40 written citations, another 45 warning citations, and you can see that we have our community resource officer hard at work. He handed out 93 local ordinance, as most of those were parking violations. We also responded to seven motor vehicle accidents for the month of June. For the month of July, we had 941 calls for service total. We had 23 incidents and criminal investigations. We had nine criminal arrests. We had 43 citations that were written citations, and another 21 warning citations handed out. And we had 101 local ordinance violations, which most of those were also parking violations. And we had five motor vehicle accidents. Only other thing I would like to add is that last night, we just completed the first half of our semi-annual training over at the Kitty Hawk Elementary School, where we do our active shooter response. And with the help of the new chief with Southern Shores Fire Department, Ed Lindbacher, I'd like to thank him and his people. We asked them to participate. They actually played parts of Victims, and they played it very well. We also did this in conjunction with Kitty Hawk Police Department, and we'll finish up with the rest of the officers that were not able to attend this Thursday. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Extra patrols, I see in June was like 109, and here in July, it's 129. What are those?
A lot of those are just extra added patrols that we try to hit some of the hotspots where we've had complaints, be it speeding, be it people, we've had a couple of them where there were vehicles that were entered, a couple of houses that were entered, rental houses. So we just beef up our patrols in the targeted areas.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Finally, I knew, fairly knew, fire chief, Ed Lindbacher.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Just a brief report tonight. You can see the breakdowns on the screen in front of you. Three fires, one overpressurized propane, 47 rescue calls, one hazardous condition with no fire, three service calls, one good intent, five false alarms, nine severe weather, which are attributed to Hurricane Arthur all in one 12-hour period. And the best you went to type was one citizen complaint this month, and that was in reference to an open burn, so.
I missed the special incident.
It was in reference to a open burn. It was a citizen complaint on an open burn.
I understand. Thank you.
And that's it. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Ed. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
There are no reports from town boards tonight, is that correct? General public comment, do we have a sign-up sheet? Those of you who've been to our meetings before know that during the general public comment speak time, you'll be allowed to speak up to three minutes, and we know you'll respect other people's time as well, so we just ask that you try to keep it to three minutes. We will not normally respond to your comments at this time. We'll let you make the comments, we'll thank you for it, and then we ask that you let the next person who's on the list come up and talk, if we have more. Is it Dave Barker? Good evening, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. You've heard this same statement several times. I want to thank the police department for putting the dummy car next to my house. Folks, I live at 226 North Dogwood, the worst intersection on the Outer Banks. There's about 5,000 to 10,000 cars that go through there on the weekend. This weekend, and the reason I came tonight, there were three younger children, young teenagers, and they were actually at the intersection three or four different times, telling the people, "That's just a dummy car. There's nobody in it. Go ahead." You know, flagging people through the stop sign. It's terrible, you know? And something, and I know we're going to redo the intersection, but something has to be enforced there. You could have 300 to 500 citations written every weekend for failure to stop at a stop sign. I have a seven-year-old granddaughter, and I won't let her play in the front yard because there's going to be an accident there one day. I hate to say it, but somebody's going to get hurt and hurt bad. That's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I think we've all heard the stories about Dogwood Trail. It's really a safety issue for our town, a public safety concern for all of us, and the question is, how do we resolve it? And then Dave brought up a good point. Do you keep somebody on duty all the time at the intersection, or do you just deal with reality and hope nobody gets hurt?
That's what the town does. They enforce the speed limit, they enforce the stop, the traffic, the laws, and, I could go on and on, but thank you very much for your time.
Ray Sharp.
Afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Ray Sharp, a property owner on Fairway Drive for the past 20 years, and a resident for the last 13. Following a briefing by the town staff on July 16th, discussions with the town engineer on July 18th, and additional discussion with the town manager on July 21st, residents of Fairway Drive yesterday petitioned to cancel plans to reconstruct our street. This chart shows the voting. There's two blocks on Fairway Drive, Block 118, there's 11 lots, 10 people signed the petition. Block 119 has 20 lots, 14 people signed the petition. 91% on Block 118, 70% on Block 119, for a total of 77% of the people living on the street. This shows 3.8 acres of land. Down here, it has one house on it. That's the street that David Stick built. As a Southern Shores developer, he preferred narrow streets with tree-lined canopies, fostering family camaraderie, away from the hustle and bustle of fast-paced city life. The plan to reconstruct our street eliminates three medians, and we wish to maintain the beauty and the unique character of the meandering tree-lined street, which provides a deterrent to speeders, a shield for residents, drivers, walkers, strollers, and bikers from errant golf balls from the 50th Duckwoods Country Club, and essentially ruins the character of our street. Fairway Drive is a dead-end street, which always will be lightly traveled, and has a speed limit of 15 miles per hour. It should be noted that there are only 23 homes and eight vacant lots available for future homes. Our street should not be considered with those in our town, which are more heavily traveled and require extensive repair. Town maintenance records should reflect less than five road repairs on the town-maintained portion of the street in the last 20 years. Drains on the street are superb, with only pockets of water evident at the northern section of the westbound lane at the beginning of the town-maintained portion. Resident safety concerns are the two large trees on South Dogwood Trail, which restrict one's ability to view northbound traffic when turning south from Fairway Drive, and we encourage removal of those trees when funds to improve South Dogwood Trail are available. As stated in our petition, we request the current road damage caused by a leaning tree be repaired, and any remaining funds be transferred to more critical projects in our town. Thanks for the opportunity to address the council.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate it. Jennifer? I don't have your last name, I'm sorry.
It's written there, Frost.
Frost. Jennifer Frost.
Oh, Jennifer Frost. I just couldn't read it. I didn't understand it, I just didn't, I wasn't sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm glad to speak to you tonight. I just have a couple of questions, and then some comments. With regard to this so-called betterment of Fairway Drive, I'd like to know who drew the plan or plan. I would like this in writing. Has the planning board given their opinion yet? I would like to know that. Because I remember the Nag's Head Planning Board, I served on it with Mayor Don Brown, fabulous guy. I'd like to know what the costs are of the proposal, the timeline, and as the list of the advantages. And I want to thank Claire Sutton for information, because it's been very difficult to get information from the town of Southern Shores, but thanks to her. So now I'm going to make some comments. Fairway Drive now is in harmony with David Stick's development actions, his love and sensitivity towards the environment. The driving is slow at 15 miles an hour. That's safe for two-legged and four-legged residents, and they are both kinds. What is suggested for the speed limit? Because we don't, at the moment, kill deer by mistake, or run over geese, Canada geese. We have to see their family meetings. I'd like to know what the suggested, who suggested the speed limit? The neighborhood, Fairway Drive is a neighborhood gem. And opposite David Stick's old house, it's not developed at all, and that place is known by my business partner and friend, Lilius Morrison and me, as Dare Way on Fairway. And the deer come at night, they, some of them, one of them's already got twins, it's amazing. And then the geese have their whole chemozzle and talk and do everything else. So they hold meetings, the dogs enjoy peaceful days. There is no traffic to worry about as such. People go there because they just want to come home, whatever. No speed increase is desirable. We need assurance that the curves and the slow speed will remain. We really need that assurance. I've had, since I've stayed there, I've had a nightmare. It was put to me once to join Fairway Drive with 158, going through the, because at the moment, we've cut off at the cul-de-sac, which is wonderful. But if we look at what could happen to Fairway Drive in the future, David Stick's kind of nightmare, then it's going to be like Dogwood, where all the people are haring up to get the duck and corolla as quickly as they can. So I just want to tell you that we just can't have disruption, Mr. Mayor. I don't know whose idea this was, and I would like that to be revealed tonight, because as I said, one of the great things about Nag's Head with Don Brown was there was great transparency. Everybody knew what, who was doing what and why they were doing it. So everybody was much more open, and quite frankly, tended to be more honest, if I may say so. And I don't mean you personally. I just mean somebody. I don't know who's behind this, frankly, slightly lunatic idea. By the way, I'm one of the brokers that develops sanding. It was very much of the tradition of David Stick, and I intend to honor David, because he did so much for our community, and I thank you.
Thank you. Loith Morrison.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you, town, for wanting to take care of some of the needed work on Fairway Drive. I appreciate your attention to this. I have reviewed, I've had the opportunity to review the proposed plan for the remediation of the road. I'm sorry that we haven't had more time to take it in, and that there has not been time for exchange with many of my neighbors, my respected neighbors. I think it's, I agree with my neighbors that it's very sad that a number of trees have to be removed from the road, and that two of the three divisions in the road are not included in the plan. However, I notice that the plan calls for an 18-foot wide blacktop with a curb on either side to allow for stormwater drainage. And I measured, I measured Fairway Drive, the west end, the private end of Fairway Drive last night, and I noticed that it was also 18-foot wide paving. So I don't believe the paving of the road is at issue. And what we are all concerned about is the taking down of the trees. I recognize that there is a safety factor, and I agree with Ray Sharp that sadly, the beautiful trees on Mr. Palmer's corner should go because you can't see properly. So I recognize that. However, Mr. Mayor, councilors, and fellow residents, I think we have to recognize that the trees are very mature, the ones that are scheduled to go. They've been damaged by hurricanes and storms, and they may not have much life left. And I think it is our responsibility as residents of Fairway to think of our responsibility to the future and to future generations, and not simply to regret what has to happen. And so I support the town in taking, paving the road, taking the trees. However, Mr. Mayor and councilors, it will greatly reduce the beautiful canopy that we presently have. And so, to get ready for the future, I come from a tradition where trees die, and you plant for future, you may plant many trees for future generations. And so that's what I'm asking for tonight, is that the town take the lead. First of all, in contributing funds, and secondly, a plan that would involve all of the residents, those interested in Fairway Drive, in creating a new canopy for the future. I would like, that's a recommendation and a request, funding and that we work together to have a plan to re-tree the street, and try to work, and also include the golf course as well. So we have a small group, no-nonsense, scientific, botanical, and we prepare for the future. And that is, to me, that is the best way to honor the past and to honor the legacy of David, the ideals of David Stick. That's my first request. And the second request is that I gather there's been a proposal to have a cul-de-sac at the end of the town-owned part of the street, and I request that that be put back, that there be a turnaround with a small island for trees, because that will provide, I understand that will provide an opportunity for fire trucks, emergency, and so on, to turn around without going down the whole way of the private part of Fairway Drive. It seems sensible to me, and if it had a little island in the middle, then I think part of the character, the present character would be retained. And just a final thing, and that is, I did notice that there is a slight meander in the road. It's not dead straight, and if there were that cul-de-sac with a landscaped island, it would break the straight run. So I ask you serious to consider these two matters, and thank you, and thank the engineer, Joe Anlaff, for his efforts. I know that your intentions are honorable.
Thank you, Loith. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else would like to speak to this issue or some other issue who hadn't signed up? Yes, ma'am. If you could just come up and identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Stacy Proctor. I didn't plan to speak tonight. My parents live on Fairway Drive, and they've had a house there since 1985. I guess I just wanted to speak to the character of the street, and also safety concerns. My car has been, ever been, well... My car has been, ever been, well, it was brand new. It's been hit at least three times by golf balls. They're right behind the, I guess it's the fifth hole. And people, you know, slice them all the time. We find them in the front lawn, they've almost broken windows. I think if you're going to cut down all the trees, it's really just a safety concern. So, you know, and I've also gone for walks on the road and, you know, you see golf balls going by and you almost get hit in the head. So, safety is a really big deal and, you know, I don't know much about this, but in terms of the cul-de-sac, that's also right in front of my parents' land and also land that hasn't been developed. And that'll totally cut into the land, and we're now on MapQuest and Google, so people cut through that street anyway. And so that's just going to create, people can just go faster speed, and I just really don't think it's going to be safe. And also, it's a beautiful street. I mean, I live in DC, I love going down that street. And frankly, I think it's a waste of money. I mean, you have Dogwood Trail, that's an accident waiting to happen, someone's going to die. You know, you have all those SUVs, everybody's cutting through. So I think that the money should go to, you know, Dogwood Trail. That street does not need, you know, all of that. And I understand that there's finally money to go towards that street, but I think that it could go to something, it could just be used in a better way. So that's all I'd say. So thank you, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Appreciate your comments, thank you. Old business? I see nothing to discuss. New business? Final reports to town manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to run over a few things, one of which includes our efforts at carrying out your capital improvement plan for the year, which was referenced tonight, also in the public comment period, and I'll hold that to the end, if that's okay. I did want to report to you that after discussing islands in NC-12, crossover islands with the town of Naggshead and DOT, we have gotten some vertical strips on order that should be in very shortly to be able to place some at the north and south terminuses of those two islands, Ocean View Loop and Skyline Drive. So we'll have those up very shortly. Also, we'll be talking with DOT about trying to do thermoplastic along the edging as well. Of course, as you can tell, there are a lot of vehicles that cross over that island, so we're trying to watch that as well. I did want to report, you mentioned Mr. Mayor, Lieutenant Terry's retirement ceremony, just to remind council, that will be here at the Pitt Center on Friday, August fifteenth at 1:00 PM. Again, to honor Lieutenant Terry for his retirement. I wanted to defer for a minute, if I could, to the Public Works Director to give you an update on the Tall Pine Bridge municipal replacement project, if she would. She's talked to the engineer today, and I thought it would be more appropriate if she just gave you a direct briefing on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Currently with the Tall Pine Bridge project, we have a sixty percent set of design plans that have been approved by the DOT. We anticipate having a one-hundred percent set of design plans complete by October. Both the DOT and town staff will have an opportunity to review those plans in November, and from that, a bid set will be developed. We anticipate being able to go through the bid process in the December-January timeframe and starting work early spring of 2015, the March-April timeframe. And it has been recommended to us by the design team to have a six-to-nine month construction duration, which will put us running through the summer and into the fall of 2015 with that work. That's my quick update, if you have any questions.
That's good, drawing that period, that means that portion of Dogwood's going to be closed?
Correct.
Well, the problem is, I think, I see people still going to try to come down there. Is there going to be something, town to stay off there and go down to here?
Oh, there will be quite a bit of signage, barricade, that sort of thing, redirecting folks, starting at one fifty-eight and twelve and then going into the town.
I just can see bottlenecks down there.
That, that road will be closed, basically, if you live in north of Tall Pine Bridge, you won't be able to get out unless you take East Dogwood or some other road I'm not familiar with. And then, of course, if you live south of Tall Pine, you'll be okay to get in and out, even up when all the bridges being constructed, I would imagine. But you will be impacted if you're north of the Tall Pine Bridge, no question about it. And, but the saving grace, I guess, as the gentleman in the back said, we'll have a little bit less cut-through traffic for next summer, probably most of the summer. Thank you.
But the bridge will be out, but, but no other roads would be closed.
Right, right. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Rachel. To continue on, Mr. Mayor, did want to report to the council that we're making plans for the September sixth surfing event here again, the Sixth Annual Throwdown North of Town in Southern Shores. And the town, of course, is a co-sponsor of that event with Chicago Property Owners Association, and this year there are several corporate sponsors. And the charity funds raised by that event will go through the Outta Banks Relief Foundation. So we do expect, depending on the weather, again, the same kind of crowd we had last year, which was about four hundred people during the day from morning till afternoon. So it should be a great event for Southern Shores, and we'll try to publicize it as much as possible. The September agenda will have on your agenda a request to approve debt financing, short-term debt financing for two of the police vehicles that council approved in its budget ordinance for this year. So that'll be on your September agenda. The purchases are in the process as per the budget. And as approved, we'll be doing three-year financing on those vehicles, and that'll be on your September agenda. So you'll see that when it comes out. Also, during the month of August, I anticipate us calling or holding a capital improvement planning committee meeting to update on where we are with the start of the year, with the projects that we've started per your, per council's direction and where we think we will be in the spring as far as the money and the funding available for the, consistent with the amount that had already been budgeted. You heard some comments tonight, and it is appropriate that I had an update for the two projects that Mr. Anloff of Anloff Engineering has designed, and we're ready to go to bid per your direction for those projects. One, of course, is the Fairway Drive Improvement Project. I will say to you that that project was discussed in 2008 with a lot of other streets, just about every street in town. It was prioritized, at that time was not included on the first three years of that project. But as, two years ago, it became, it was being considered by the Capital Improvement Committee. And last year, it was decided to put it by priority on this year's capital improvement list. And I think everybody's familiar with the street and its physical condition. We did, as the budget called for, we authorized Mr. Anloff to go ahead and come up with the preliminary design. And as is our custom, when there is great interest in a project, we held an on-site meeting and invited every resident by letter to come with an on-site meeting. And I'm happy to report, there was a great turnout for that meeting. And we stayed probably about ninety minutes and met with citizens and residents and owners there. And there were some subsequent meetings with some owners who were unable to attend that. And of course, we, as always, the door's always open. There have been other citizens who've come in, even in the last couple of days, to look at the plans and discuss it. We have been totally transparent with it, as always. We, we don't know what else we could do, other than to get the word out. The, when we were at the on-site meeting, we reminded residents and citizens that we do have a bi-monthly e-newsletter. And I was surprised at how many citizen and residents of Southern Shores do not subscribe. We constantly try to advertise that. And, you know, we did tell them that day, as we do in other streets when we meet on the streets, to show the plans. Staff's plan, and tonight I've asked Mr. Anloff to be here and Rachel, our Public Works Director, to be here in case you, as individual council members, have any questions that you would like to ask of them in your time. We feel like we've addressed the concerns that everybody had, but at the same time, considering the premise that this is for the good of the town. We certainly recognize the unique situation at Fairway Drive. We recognize that it is legally a dead-end street at the end of the public portion that's owned by the town. There's a private section beyond that that the association takes care of. So in our design, we are limited to certain considerations, because that is the public street as it dead-ends. Obviously, and I believe that there were three meetings ahead of this one where we mentioned this project and the other project. And I believe I emphasized at each meeting that there would be trees that would have to come out. Obviously, with a capital improvement project like this, we have been through these same type projects where we cannot put that kind of infrastructure in without removing any kind of hardwood or softwood that ultimately the roots will upheave the asphalt. And I will say, if you've ridden the street, you know that there are root upheavals from start to finish, not just in one spot. I mean, we could go out and encircle them with spray paint, and you would see probably over three, somewhere between three and four dozen. So they are, from the beginning to the end, very similar to the streets we've had to repair. That will not go away if we don't remove the trees, they will keep coming, even if we put new asphalt, new basin, new asphalt down. So that was certainly a consideration that we had to address. Mr. Anloff can speak to the practicality of removing the islands there. I think even Councilman Sanders had mentioned a comment about those and the public safety vehicles being able to get down that street. We did find a way to put one median back in after hearing the citizens at their meeting on site. We, we came back and studied that hard, and Mr. Anloff was able to configure one island in the, in the final plan that is there. And we plan to put low-maintenance landscaping in that island. Not tall hardwoods, not tall softwoods, but something akin to six-to-seven, eight-foot trees. There are different varieties, of course, crepe merlins being one. But it would be decked with mulch, so we wouldn't have to go in with a mower and do that. But we did find a way to do that. The meandering, it was explained to the citizens in detail that day, and subsequently, when we put in this kind of infrastructure, that the asphalt needs to go roughly down the center line of the street. I know all the, currently, all the utilities are in, but there are certainly utilities in the future that may have to be put in, and there's always maintenance on either side of the asphalt. We cannot move the asphalt towards the edge of the right-of-way and lose our, our space to be able to maintain the street. That's come up in several other discussions in the past couple of years, and we have stuck to that policy, because if we did that, we would not have enough room to maintain. So we feel like we addressed those issues. There are still some trees that remain, as everyone saw in the plan. But Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I submit to you that we have the plan. It is ready to go, the final, we are planning to put it out this Friday for bid. We explained the schedule to the citizens at the meeting and subsequent to that, that if we don't get it out now, we probably will not be able to have it done, completed in the fall paving season. And Mr. Anloff can comment more about that. So we have, have that proposal, as well as the east-north-south Dogwood intersection proposal, ready to be submitted Friday for bids. Again, the Public Works Director and the towns consultant engineer are here, if y'all have questions. But unless the council directs us otherwise, we're ready to go, move ahead with this project. And that's my report.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions for Peter? Any questions for Mr. Anloff?
Just one question, and one person addressed the concern of golf balls coming off a golf course. I'm not a golfer, so is there any way of screening that or addressing that particular concern?
I'm going to ask Mr. Anloff to come up and think he can elaborate on that better than I can.
I just have to think about it.
Mr. Mayor, council, good evening. As to the golf balls, there are, there are golf balls that are hit, errant golf balls that are hit. When I met Mr. Proctor on site, we did in fact witness a golfer hit a ball that ended up in his driveway. But as Peter explained, there's a necessity to remove the trees so that the roots don't penetrate the base of the road and lift the road up. We're also looking to protect our long-term investment. This project is estimated at several hundred thousand dollars to complete, and we need it to last multiple decades. Most of the roads in the town are thirty-plus years old. The capital improvement plan list is extensive. We have lots of roads in town that need repair. And we need this to last thirty years, because it'll be thirty years before we have a chance to get back to do any additional repairs to it. After Hurricane Isabel, this town was like a game of pickup sticks. There were trees across every road. So we're looking to remove those trees that lie within four feet of the edge of the proposed pavement, which is a standard that we developed when Hal was mayor the first time, to generate what we call a recovery zone for cars that need to get off the edge of pavement to avoid hitting a dog or a child. That was a concession. Really, we were looking at was an eight-foot recovery zone, but there was some public opposition, so we reduced it to four feet. So we remove those trees within four feet of the edge of pavement and those that are impacted by the grading that's necessary for stormwater improvements and to grade hillsides back. If we get into that root, we don't want to cut off the roots on half the tree so that the next time the wind blows from a particular direction, it's, we've compromised the anchorage of that tree. So we remove those trees in order to protect that long-term investment and to make more expeditious emergency vehicle access after a storm. After Isabel, it was half a day to a day in some streets before you could get an ambulance to someone who needed it. So that's the intent. As far as golf balls, they are hit into that area. And, you know, at this time, there's nothing on the plan that's contemplated the installation of a buffer by way of a tree planting schedule. We did discuss at the public information meeting possibly approaching the golf course. After all, they're the reason that the golfers are there, to plant a buffer that is on the outside limit of the right-of-way on their property. That right-of-way is approximately sixty feet wide. The road transgresses generally down the middle but meanders, so we kept the meandering character, both as the road meanders from left to right and the topography as it undulates up and down. We did not change that character. Normally, when we design roads, we design them straight down the middle of the right-of-way with no aesthetics, no character. But we left that in there as a direct response to residents' and early critique before our public information meeting. And we, again, installed a median or an island in the center as a concession, as opposed to eliminating those, those features from the road. But as far as the golf balls, I really can't speak to. I'm a terrible golfer myself.
So am I.
I'd be one that would be damaging cars.
Mine would be over in that yard.
I don't golf in residential communities.
Yeah, I have a question. This came to mind because of something that Lilius said about planting trees. And I'm not talking about landscaping with, which requires maintenance and such. But are there species of trees which, within that four-foot buffer, would not be potentially damaging to the asphalt, for example, Dogwood?
I wouldn't promote planting any tree of any size within that four feet.
Well, I guess I misspoke. Between the four and the eight foot, outside the four foot.
Let me explain that this right-of-way is very unique. Most of our right-of-ways are sixty feet wide and they're chock-full of trees. Once you get outside that twenty-foot paved corridor, you have twenty feet of trees, deciduous trees, pine trees, from, from the edge of pavement to the edge of right-of-way. On Fairway Drive, because it's part of the golf course, that part of the right-of-way to the south of the road is maintained in part by the golf course and is basically void of all trees and vegetation, no ground scrub, except for those large trees that are part of the right-of-way. So when we, when we did Holly Trail and we called for the elimination of fifty or sixty trees, the public came out of, out of the woodwork, they were upset about it. But there were literally thousands of trees in the right-of-way. When we were finished removing the sixty trees that were necessary as part of the project, it was very difficult for people to recognize where the specific trees were, and it did not compromise the aesthetics of the community. It's still kept with that David Stick-covered canopy roadway. Fairway Drive is different, because if you drive down that right-of-way, once you get past Mr. Palmer's house, it's grass and trees, no, and most of the trees are mature trees, greater than, you know, thirty years old. There's not a lot of young. There's not a lot of young canopy that's 15 years, 20 years old to come and replace it. On the other streets, when we take out the big trees that are ailing in health or impacting the road, there's another tree right behind it or below it that's ready to fill that void. And it only takes a couple of years before those younger trees are filling that canopy. And all of a sudden, the aesthetics are maintained. So in this particular case, the right-of-way is very different in nature. The existing condition is different. And so there are trees that you can plant that grow quickly. I'm not a forestry person or an expert in trees, but I know that in all logging, cut-over tracks, the silver maples and red maples grow so fast, it's ridiculous. So there are trees you can plant that will grow large within our lifetime. And so there are things that can be done, but that's not contemplated by our work scope right now.
Well, you know, in my opinion, the roads, the roadways here have been allowed over time to develop a little bit too much canopy. For example, my first introduction to Southern Shores was in 1984 in April, coming up Dogwood Trail, which, once you pass the school, was an amazing white tunnel of dogwood blooms, which they're probably between the school and the turn at East Dogwood, there's probably not more than a dozen dogwoods left. But there's a ton of sweet gums, which I don't think anybody that's lived here any length of time loves a sweet gum tree. And a lot of volunteer pines. And the canopy has grown up to the extent that there's no way a dogwood's going to survive under that canopy. So to say something controversial, I'd love to see every sweet gum and pine tree along Dogwood Trail cut down, as long as we replace them with some nice, disease-resistant dogwoods. Because I'd love to see in my lifetime that same tunnel again. And that's what brought to mind, when Lilius mentioned that, it kind of triggered my memory and made me think about what that looked like then. Today, a lot of people might look at it to move here and say, oh, it's wonderful. It's a nice canopy. But they didn't, they don't know what it was, you know, 20, 30 years ago. I guess it is close to 30 years ago. It's a shame.
And there's a lot less trees, there were a lot less trees. If you go into the conference room at Town Hall and look at the aerial photographs on the hall, there's a great portion of this town that was devoid of all trees. There's been a, there's a copious number of trees compared to what there were. And I would tell everyone, I've acted in this role for the last 14 years and touched every street improvement project that we've done. And we've had to remove a significant number of trees to meet a standard. I don't have the emotional attachment to trees. I don't live on the streets. But every project that we've done looks good when it's done. And the necessity of the tree removal is evident when the project is finished.
Well, I know when there's change, people fear a lot of things. For example, especially the side streets. The neighborhoods where we've done Holly, it came up with Beech Tree, which I helped broker a compromise that turned out to be the most ridiculous thing that I think they would all agree today that it was a terrible thing. We did half the road. And the other half is the park that you come in on and it's in pretty bad shape now. So I swore after that, I'm not going to get involved in compromising engineering because engineering is there for a purpose. A lot of people may not realize that some of the streets in this town have been surface-coded so many times. There's got to be some stump holes out there in our streets that have 18 or 20 inches asphalt in them. So they need to be ground, they need to be engineered, they need to be ground down. We need to keep the stormwater off the streets. We unfortunately have to do the things that towns do with their streets. But if there's any way that we could come up with some tree plantings along that street, if it's, again, I'm not talking about something major, not 100 trees, not landscaping that requires additional funds for annual maintenance, just something to help produce a screen. And perhaps we can have a discussion with the Duckwoods Golf Club about the golf ball problem on that street. The other thing that Lilius brought up about a turnabout, I don't know how practical that would be or how expensive that would be. I just, I can't see how that would fit in with the nature of that street. Although it is a dead end and it has a private end, our services still go through there. The trash pickup, the recycling, the fire department, the ambulances. And what I've seen happen on that street many times in the past on emergency calls is you have two or three apparatus from the fire department, you have an ambulance, you have a police officer. Next thing you know, you don't even have room to turn the ambulance around because of that split where those medians are. So unfortunately, I have to agree with, you know, those not going back in. But again, I just, I have a concern about trees. Well, if we can address, if staff can address that at some point, I'm not talking about something that requires additional engineering.
As Joe said, I didn't want to comment, that portion, basically, that's a public works operation. And we explained that the landscaping part of the island and anything else we were to landscape in the future, as we do on any street, would be a public works operation and will continue to look at that, yes, to see what might be needed, if anything, in the future as far as our street beautification, if we can work that in with something with the golf course possibly. That's something, as Joe says, is not part of the capital project, but we certainly look at that as we do in every street.
Thank you.
Any questions to Joe?
Thank you, Joe. I would just address one issue. That's that the tree has deep enough roots so it won't disturb the paving. And there are trees that you can do that with, that you have a deep root system. Some of the hardwoods go down forever before they even start to spread roots to the right or left. The maples are not one of those trees. They tend to be surface roots. They're fast growers, but they are a little bit of a problem for roadways.
Well, one of the things that I think that there is a generous portion of right-of-way. Some places it exceeds 20 feet wide. So the trees could be put at the outside limit of the right-of-way without impacting the surface for 50 years or never. So there's lots of opportunities to discuss that.
Thank you for your time this evening.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that's the report of the manager. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'd just like to make one more comment, if I may. On the reconstruction of east and north Dogwood, I think I've got nine trees, large trees, that are going to be taken down. And that's a sound barrier and it's bad enough now. Are there going to be other trees planted, bushes, something to quieten that intersection down on my side of the street? I know I'm just one person. And I've begged council before, I'll put a fence up, I'll do this, I'll do that. No, I can't do it. Four years ago, I planted Russian olive seeds. They're about four feet tall now. But still, yet the noise level there on the weekend is terrible, terrible. Starts at 5:00 a.m. in the morning and doesn't stop until 6:00 a.m.
Thank you. Mr. Town Attorney?
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Just keep it brief. I want to thank all of you for coming out here tonight and voicing your concerns and voicing your opinions. We heard some cons and we heard of one or two pros. But I want you to know that I listen to you, the council listens to you. We have a plan to do this street and we're going to try to stay with that plan. The street belongs to the town. The street's the town's responsibility. Long-term, short-term, save public safety, all the reasons that engineers touched on and we've all discussed among ourselves. But we will work with you closely. Our staff will work with you as far as any questions you may have about what happens next and when it's going to happen. I do appreciate your comments and the things you said. I respect them and I respect each one of you for being here.
Is there going to be an onsite meeting for the intersection there for the people that live there? Or has it been finalized and it's going to be submitted this Friday? We've never had a letter or anything.
I'll have to defer to the town manager.
We were planning on notifying the other adjoining property owners, I believe there are six property owners there, for the, around the intersection. And we were planning on notifying them of the link to look at the final. I believe the gentleman has seen the plan himself. And that's basically the way we'll do it with assets. There's only about a half a dozen adjacent property owners in the affected area.
So we're moving content after Friday, after it's submitted?
No, sir. I'm not sure exactly when you'll be notified, but you've seen the plan and you can come in at any time. And the other owners will be notified after tonight that the plan is available to look at. But we will go ahead and submit it, put it out for bid concurrently with that because the design is done.
Once again, thank you very much, folks.
I'm going to start with you, Joey.
I don't have anything more.
Thank you. Ray?
I have nothing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I had the opportunity of attending the ribbon cutting in the, over at Dominion here a couple of weeks ago, which that's going to be now their demonstration and research project. It includes four wind turbines, a battery system, ground-mounted solar panels, and a balance of plant checkout or test protective relays, controllers and things of that nature. There's one, two, three kiosks. There's one there that you can go observe at their facility. You just drive in the parking lot. There'll be one at Kitty Hawk Elementary. And I believe the other one is down at First Flight. Then it'll be eventually a kiosk online, Dominion's online. But these are the four windmills you'll see over there. One is, generates, the total generation of the four of them is about 13 kilowatts. There's one that sits over there that's about 65 foot. There's two at 30 and one at 25. So if anybody's interested in alternative energy and wind being one of them, Dominion's doing some work over there with it. So you'll see people coming and going various places on it. But it was an interesting tour and what they're trying to do some research on to wean ourselves away from some of the ways we generate our power.
Thank you, Leo. David?
Just a reminder, because the town manager brought it up, we do have a town e-newsletter that goes out twice a month. We also, all of our meetings are taped. They're available on YouTube. I can't give you the exact thing, but try looking up the town of Southern Shores on YouTube. You should be able to find all of our meetings. That way you can keep tabs on it if you haven't got time to come to the meetings. And, you know, if it gets too boring, it does have a fast-forward. But also, they're actually played on the GovEd channel. The government channel that is, the education channel is separate on Charter. But like I said, if you don't have Charter, then you can find us on YouTube. That way you can keep tabs on us.
Thank you, David. Yes, Ray?
I have one comment I would like to hear. Who's our new mayor on Fairway Drive, Mike and Jane Doe, over here? This is my first meeting. And the second, go ahead.
I just want to thank you for bringing them out tonight. Thank you for being here.
The second item is we've purchased cul-de-sac discussions a couple of times. Is it or is it not in the final plan that's going to be submitted?
It is not in the final plan. The only, as I mentioned earlier, the only thing, difference in the plan that was gone over at the onsite meeting and the final plan is the insertion of a median island midway point. That's the only change. And the idea of a cul-de-sac was discussed with the adjacent property owner himself who fronts that particular area. One-on-one, including one of his next-door neighbor, I believe, or the property owner next door to him.
So the cul-de-sac's not in?
No, sir.
At this time, we will be going into a closed session to discuss the possibility of establishing a position to be taken by the town and potentially negotiating price and/or terms of a possible contract for the acquisition of property by purchase, option exchange or lease. The location's at 43 Cypress Lane in Southern Shores. The owner of record is Robert L. Mott and Helen H. Mott. The potential use of that property from the town's perspective would be passive recreation in accordance with North Carolina General Statutes 143-318-11A5. And to review the approved closed session minutes for our last closed session meeting pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318-11A1.
I'll sum it.
You'll need a motion.
I need a motion to go into closed session.
All right, second.
I move.
All in favor.